Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's December 11th meeting. I ask everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I will entertain a motion to approve how to ratify the payroll warrant for 3815.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I will entertain a motion to approve the selecting minutes for October 9th, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Announcements to Brookfield Food Pantry. Brookfield Food Pantry is in need of your generosity this time of year to aid others less fortunate to help your neighbors this holiday season in the form of cash or donations. Please contact either Ms. Woodward at (508) 867-3891 or Ms. Walker at (508) 867-2281. The food pantry at Saint Parish, Saint Mary's Parish is open from 9:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Wednesday and Saturday. Also like to announce that through the hard work and dedication of our leadership down on Beacon Hill, the Brookfield Police Barracks, state police barracks will not be closing. So I command everyone involved. Any other announcements?
Just on that point, I did send a note of thank you to Ian and to Reverend Bertham. But in the case of the legislation that was filed, that that legislation continues so that we have the facts, so that the next time this comes around, at least we have the background necessary.
If they choose to follow that legislation. For those that aren't familiar, the legislation that was filed requested a lot of studies. Obviously, it'd be up to them to do that.
Sure.
That was piece.
But it would be good information.
And it made it out of the committee and got the governor's attention and the colonels as well. Infernal met on Wednesday, and it will not be closing.
I also, I also wrote to each of them two and commended for job well done. You know, they've serving our district, the two of them, very, very good. I think they're doing an excellent job at it.
Steve, is this, is this an extension or?
From what, from what the colonel said, permanent.
It's not, it's not closing at all.
Not closing at all. That's good.
But it is life, and anything can happen at any time, so.
Oh, yes, but the paper it said, you know, like, like February or something, but this is beyond that.
Yeah, it's beyond that.
There was a lot of outreach that reached their ears, so.
Very nice.
It is very nice. Anybody who goes to address the board this morning? Welcome, sir.
Good morning. Just want to give you a quick update on things around the lake. We brought the trash barrels. We, Lake Association decided to fund trash barrels at the Baltimore itself fund. They were delivered this week. We will monitor them to be sure that we don't get a buildup of trash. If anybody sees it, just let us know. I believe this will be picked up once we.
Can you let everybody know how to get ahold of you if they need to?
Yeah, feel free to reach out to qqLA.org or you can give me a call at (508) 637-1458. And if you see something going on down at the beach, give us a shout. You know, we'll work with Herb and be sure that, because that's always been a concern, that the trash barrels will detract, you know, large amounts of trash. And so we will keep it right out and we'll watch it and be sure that doesn't happen. The other thing I wanted to mention was that the payment for the quarter bodies for the supplemental coverage for the winter season has been submitted and so that is taken care of as well.
Excellent. Thanks, sir. Anybody else who's to address the board this morning? Hearing none. Item number one, I will entertain a motion at 9:03 to enter into the tax classification hearing.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Pierce, welcome, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Each year, we come to this time and we discuss the come and goings of the cash and cash equivalents in the town of Brookfield. And in the past, sometimes we've inundated you with paperwork with numbers up one side and down the other and along the corners and the edges and all there, which flummoxes just about everybody looks at it. So the real point of contention at this point in time is that we have a tax rate which is temporary until we sign the papers and submit it to the DOR. The tax rate is based on a single rate for the town. Towns of our size historically all go by a single rate. As a matter of fact, there are some towns of a larger size that have had a double rate, like Stirbridge, and want to get out of it and get back to a single rate because a single rate is more equitable, especially for Brookfield, which has little to no industry and, and a small commercial base. Ninety-two percent of our income from this town comes from the residences. Now, the only thing that you can do for the residential doesn't apply to us because we are so heavily residential, all right? And so anything you do for a residential exemption would put more burden on the rest of the residential people, so.
Mr. Snyder, you are familiar with what we're doing here?
Yeah.
Okay. When I first started, I thought we could play with a tax rate, but the only way to play with it, like Mr. Pierce is stating, is to decide if we want to charge the businesses extra or set a single tax rate. We can't set the tax rate. That's done by what we owe. So this discussion here, what Mr. Pierce is presenting and he's recommending, I'm assuming, a single rate.
A single rate.
The single rate.
Yeah.
That's good.
The, oh yeah. Get that out of there.
You want my second?
Oh, I got it. The excess capacity is calculated right now at $119,099. That's a number that varies from year to year.
I didn't hear you say it, but could you repeat that?
The excess levy capacity is calculated at $119,099.06. That varies, like I say, from year to year. What this says is the impact on the tax rate is minimal. $19.50 is the tax rate, and last year's of 1915, that's a 45-cent increase, and that is about as minimal as we can get because there are increases in insurance and things we don't have control over. And those increases, we have to build into our budget. So if we go beyond that and with more capital increases, more things to buy, then that tax rate will rise and, and the amount of money in excess levy capacity will disappear. For me, I am pleased that the tax rate is down to 1950 at a 45-cent increase, and that's a minimum impact, impact on the taxpayers in the town of Brookfield.
And that's with the police station on it, too?
Oh, yeah.
Good, that's not bad at all.
So what we'd like to see is the, the selectmen vote to accept the.
I will entertain a motion to accept the recommended single tax rate for the town of Brookfield for next fiscal year.
I will make that motion.
Any other figures I've given you are all temporary because we haven't finished putting it into the system. I recommend that, that you, that you sign this today while you're here.
We have to log into the gate.
Down bar and then log into the gate.
No, have to log into the gate.
Because we're on a tight schedule. Better get that done, finish the tax recap, then we have to call in, represent the, the wire committee.
Passwords are in here. It'll all be done today before we leave.
So doesn't, because.
Before you sign it, we haven't taken a vote.
Oh.
Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Yeah, because don't the tax bills have to be out before the end of the year?
Yeah. We're, we're about, we're a little bit ahead of last year in terms of making this stuff move, and the tax recaps for the state are moving very nicely down into DOR because they've made some improvements in how to process it and it's still. Our problem is that we're a small town. We don't have all the bells and missiles that a lot of towns have been reliant on our consultant, and he does well.
Was he instrumental in helping you set the tax rate or what did the board?
He hosted.
He hosted.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask a couple more questions?
As soon as possible, sir.
How are we doing? Have the ad gone out yet for the assistant?
Well, this is the tax classification.
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll bring it up after.
So I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn the tax classification hearing at 9:12.
I will make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Has, has the position for the assistant assessor been advertised?
My name put it in. It's going in the paper on 27th, I think. So, yeah, it's, it'll be in the two weeks, and she was looking at Craigslist, but it costs $25, so we backed off, we stepped off. Let's wait and see what happens from here. The possibility is we'll put it in the citizen.
And then another thing you could do, you could probably ask, like, the tax collector to put it out on her wavelength. Do you have a system like that with the assessors, too, with the association, that you can put it out?
It's possible.
Because they have an email system. You should probably ask the.
We have an email system, too, to miss the balance.
No, no, I understand that, too, but she has, like, the all the tax collectors, you know, she could, and Mike Siri could also do it on the town clerk's website and get it out.
Well, we'll get the word out to you. It's just going in the telegram.
So it's going on the 27th? That would be a Sunday, yeah.
I'm trying to remember, 27th of November. Is that right?
No.
Could've been.
Oh, that can't be right.
No.
My name is Hamilton, I'm sorry.
All right, well, I'll speak tomorrow.
You can talk to her.
Okay, I'll talk to her.
As far as I remember, one of the two weeks ends on Christmas weekend, so. So by then, maybe you will have an idea of what's happening coming through the country.
Might have, might have to go out again as well, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, so thank you.
All right.
Item number two, joint meeting with the water commissioners. Do you want to represent it or the whole commission come on out? You can be the representative?
You want to go up?
Welcome. Rumor has it you had a meeting. I guess it was a split decision on who was going to be the next replacement.
I correct that our last regularly scheduled commissioners' meeting, which was Wednesday, we asked over for the candidates to come in, and they came in, and we, we had a discussion with them, and we, we voted on the two applicants, and there was a split decision, yes.
I know one individual. I don't know why he walked out. Does Mr. Dolan, is Mr. Dolan present?
Yes.
Would you like to come up and speak in regards to your desire for the position? Welcome, sir.
Hi, Jim Dolan. I've lived in town about 20 years. I heard the position was available, and the town's always seeking people to step into these positions. I volunteered. That's my name, Nick. And I had the agricultural position. I have a small farm on the side of, on Main Street. That's about all I can say.
Well, thank you for your desire.
Thank you.
Mr. Eaton, would you like to design your case of why you'd like to become?
Yeah, I didn't know what we were going to do, but.
Sorry. Thought it was only fair.
I, I'd like to be on the water commission because I think that we're going through a very critical stage. I think we've got very qualified commissioners now, a qualified superintendent. Bruce has expressed an interest in retirement a year from now. I consider Bruce an outstanding employee in this town, a tremendous asset.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's going to be a challenge for us to replicate that person. I look at my experience, I've been in the town for 24 years. I think I've probably attended 90% of the town meetings. I'm active in the town. Some of the things I'm working on now are kind of winding down. I'm looking for something else to do. I've had experience hiring people both in the private sector and the public sector and in nonprofits, and I will rely on the current commissioners to handle some of the day-to-day questions that I'm not familiar with at the water department. But certainly, I think I can add value in this process of hiring a replacement for Bruce and during that time also learn a little bit about how the water commissioners work. Any questions?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Thank you, sir. So this board's discussion, they're split, so.
And I know, I know both gentlemen well, and both guys are great guys. It's, it's a hard decision. The only thing that permit does offer is the hiring and the concern that we have with Bruce's retirement.
Yeah, because Bruce is, he's invaluable, I think, to the town. You know, I don't know if we'll get somebody to come along who'll be just as good as Bruce, that will pitch in, you know, like, when help is needed with other departments, and that's the thing.
So it is a difficult choice.
It is.
A choice we have to make nonetheless.
Yeah.
So any comments, questions?
No, just that we have to make a difficult decision.
Yeah, we just have to make a decision.
Do you want to throw out any ideas or?
No.
Through, through this process, and I know Mr. Dolan a little bit just by his activity in town and watching him on video on this side of the table on 194, I agree 100%, totally different, tough decision.
It is.
Through this process right here, I think Mr. Eaton gave more of a compelling argument to want to be. So if it's based on this, I would recommend Mr. Eaton. Are we in agreement?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I'll make that motion.
You want to say it? To Mr. Eaton until the end of June 30th, 2000?
No, no, it'd be, he has to run in the election.
Till May?
Until May, and then he picks.
To complete the term.
To complete the term.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second that motion.
Yeah, we have a second.
Only discussion I'd like to say is, I absolutely love the fact that you hear that the town needs help, and you step forward, and I commend you for that, I think.
Yes, I do, too.
Bottom of my heart. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Item number three.
I tried to sign when Mike was.
I'm sure you can run that.
Yep, we, can you get past that?
Why is this in here?
Oh, that's for.
Oh, it's on number eight, okay. Item number three, appointments, that was the appointment. Why we have this on the agenda, was it Tuesday night? Monday night, Tuesday night? Monday night. This week has just gotten away from me, I apologize. Mr. Holmes had resigned from the ZBA. He had rendered his resignation in that meeting, so I am going to entertain a motion to accept with regret and to send out a letter of appreciation to Mr. Holmes' resignation from the ZBA.
He's been valuable on the board. I will, I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Regretfully.
And if we can have Karen send another appreciation out to Mr. Holmes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
With that, you had appointed me as the alternate. I request that I became a, become a full-time member to that board to fill that role of alternate to full-time. So entertain a motion for that appointment.
I will make the motion that Mr. Comtois be appointed to the police building committee.
No, no, ZBA.
Oh, the ZBA, oh, I'm sorry. To the, to the ZBA.
True, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, department head meeting. Welcome to department heads. Unfortunately, two of our department heads had to leave for a call, so we got ahold of Peter. The town hall has been fitted with the natural, with the, is it natural gas? It's natural gas.
Yes.
The fire station is almost done, but the propane generator has to be switched over to natural gas, and that's going to be taken care of Monday, so I'd like to report that for that, for those individuals. Any other department heads have any?
Bridge dedication. I've been in contact with Mr. Bertham, and he's ready to set the motions forward with the state, we need a date.
What I, what I heard is that the state was waiting until spring?
No, absolutely incorrect. The state's waiting for, for us to give them a date. Linda has attended one before, and Barry's, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, I attended one at Barry's last year for a dedication of a bridge, and it was done on the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend, and I think that would be a nice time to do it, and I'm sure that, you know, all the Murray family would be around that time, and more people would be able to attend it than doing, you know, during the week. And that would give us a good time, you know, to get ready to plan the ceremony.
That would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I agree.
Do you want a motion from this board, or?
Yes, yeah, I mean, obviously, yeah, a long time for you to.
So I will, I will entertain a motion to allow the board of selectmen to reach out to Representative Bertham or whatever entity that needs to be reached out to, to request a dedication for the Saturday before Memorial Day.
Great.
And if we could reach out to the governor's office as well, send representation from either Governor Baker or Lieutenant Governor, who knows?
She probably will be.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure there's a whole protocol that's involved.
Yeah, because that sat, that Saturday, yeah, it would be the Saturday right before Memorial, on that weekend.
Well, with it, with, with the organization, they had stated that they're going to make the sign. I'm surprised they're reaching out to Donnie because Ian was talking about the sign.
Yeah.
No, I, I, that's why I've been reaching out. He told me, he said, "I'll wait for you," that's what I said.
But Ian had made comment that they're waiting on us to see if the state want, well, I think we told them we wanted the state to install the sign.
Yes.
So if we can coordinate all that with all the entities.
And then they said, like, guess what they'll do is, you know, they'll install it, and then they'll cover it until the dedication.
Okay, so I'll entertain said motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
So that takes care of item number five. We're still in the department head now.
Oh, I didn't even notice it was on there, okay. Mill Pond. Clarence, you attended a meeting with Governor Bertham.
Yes.
He said, "Have we developed any phone call?"
Well, she was going to offer us some pictures, and I'm wondering if Cindy received anything back, because she was going to give us a way of how that area would look with the reduction in surface area.
Did you get some pictures?
Not from her.
Oh, we did.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Yeah, we did, but she was, she was going forward more than she has. This.
Yes.
Beth Lambert is a representative from aquatic rehabilitation.
State, mass wildlife.
Wildlife, right.
Yeah.
But it's her, she falls under the rehabbing ponds. She showed us, she sent some photos over to us that what was a pond then turned into a stumpy ground, now turned into a green marsh, and just what you can do with bodies of water that, that were man-made and now want to, now are brought back to a native stream. It's just, she just suggesting alternatives to Mill Pond.
Has anyone, well, I'm going to direct it to Clarence because you announced to Clarence. Has anyone reached out to the Butters?
Well, this is the way you do that, because instead of just coming back and saying, hey, we're going to shrink the pond by so much, and this is, that's what we're going to do. This way, it was actually, they're our best practices in the area of doing what we're talking about doing, and with only really dealing with about a foot of surface area, I mean, that's really what we're talking about. You know, what would that change look like so that we could go to the Butters to say this is what it would look like? And so we did see a couple of pictures, and what I saw were terrific.
Right.
I mean, and for what we're doing, it wouldn't even go that far. So it's a matter of getting whatever the additional pictures were and, in fact, organizing a correspondence with the Butters so that they would see that, you know, this is a practical route with really little or no impact on the Butters. In fact, maybe some benefit to the Butters.
I, I, I think we're going to have to hire a firm, probably an engineering firm, to evaluate the depth of the pond, the slope of the pond, so that if we were to lower the water table some, what, what events would then occur after that? We're looking, we're looking to shrink the acreage of the pond from 21 acres, Cindy?
Fifteen.
Down to 15. In shallow waters, that happens rapidly. But then, the dam safety is going to have to have those numbers, they're going to have to be hard numbers before they're going to accept it.
And none of that will be determined through your study?
No, this is just to go to the Butters to say this is where, the direction we would like to head, to have them on board, and I think that that's probably the process, is to say this is the direction that we wish to head.
We've had this through three boards now, and none of them have balked. We, obviously, money is an issue, and to reduce it, so.
Well, Steve, I don't think money is an issue because we have.
Well, money's always an issue, so don't lose sight of that.
We have the loan for some of the pond dam.
The 170?
177 already in place, and we haven't spent anywhere near that amount on the work, the bank stabilization work that was done on Trout Brook.
But part of this plan lowering takes away the necessity of inspections for the dam, which is, which is an actual issue.
Which is what's.
A financial issue.
Yes.
Yes, but we have the 180 in place, right?
Yeah.
My goal will be with the 180 is to use it to remedy the situation.
Minus whatever we spent on phase one.
But we're going to have to hire an engineering firm to, to show, to provide this data.
So we can present it to the state.
And I think that's something that we should move on. Until we have that data, we really, you know.
Well, maybe, maybe it's a public hearing of the, of the.
Well, that's why I bring the Butters in. So let's, I think.
Get the public hearing done.
Well, let's get the information first to the Butters.
Exactly.
Through the public hearings, so let's get.
But you can, are we, are we getting the cat before the horse because we don't know what the ramifications are going to be until the engineer tells us what they're going to be.
Well, if I have four or five Butters that come up and say absolutely not, I don't think I would press forward with it.
Absolutely not what, though, Steve?
I don't want to reduce.
We don't, we don't know until the engineer tells us whether we can even do it.
I would argue you can do anything you want through the proper channels, but I think the Butters are.
We're currently working with Leonard Engineering to complete the reports on the bank stabilization. Would it be prudent to ask Leonard for an estimate of cost for them to do this study?
You haven't done that already?
No.
I'm not opposed to that.
We don't, we don't have the authorization.
We don't have the authorization. With, with the board of selectmen's, you know, approval, I think.
I'll entertain a motion to allow the highway department to reach out to Leonard Engineering for an estimate for said reduction, analysis of said reduction.
How about the combination? Because Bruce is involved with it. I know, as a finality, I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Well, we have a, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, then I'll second it and we discuss.
Discussion, Beth? Discussion, Beth?
I may not want to limit it to Lenardi, I would just say to authorize them to get estimates so long as the estimates don't incur any particular cost. Because while Lenardi's already on the program, it might, there might be an opportunity with somebody who's specialized in that kind of water work. Because Lenardi has probably not got an internal asset to do that and they're going to wind up subcontracting it anyway, so you're going to get their eighteen to twenty percent markup for finding a subcontract.
I think, I think Lenardi does it themselves.
Yeah.
I think through research with that, it was either fossil or neol, or Lenardi, wasn't it?
Most of the two we've dealt with previously.
Yeah.
Most of the ones that, if, if you come up with anybody else that you think, just through the history of this, fossil or neol, we don't want to work with fossil or neol, correct?
Correct, still do.
So I think Lenardi would be the best.
We can definitely look into other, as required. We're not, we're not blind to say we want.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
So, yeah, just getting back to process then, just we'll use the motion to discuss it.
Yeah.
Is that, I had, my, my, my idea was that we're going to notify the Butters, do a public hearing, go off and what this does is this brings us back to getting a bit, better information and then going forward with that process.
One hundred percent, you remember my, my issue with the Butters. The only issue that I have with a public hearing, and we just had one for the tax rate and we had one for the ZBA and revolved into them.
Oh, yeah.
Whole hearings, everything, nobody shows us one.
Well, and again, if we can get correspondence out ahead of that and, and.
Certified return receipt letter.
Yeah, they still don't.
So maybe a door knocking campaign where we physically.
Sure.
Because it obviously doesn't.
Now, is it the same, is it anybody within three hundred feet of the property or is it left? Because I know like with the assessors, when things come up, it's anybody who's within three hundred feet.
It's kind of, it's kind of stretched out beyond, too. You're going to have people that aren't the Butters that are going to have a voice in this.
Okay.
They're going to want to have a voice, so obviously it touches the Butters and this is only an informational area, it's all, this isn't, this isn't illegal.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
No, but I, but I think it's moving in the right direction.
Yes, I do too.
We've got a shallow pond, reduce it by a, depth of a foot to take care of the dam and it's just very practical that this is the way to go.
Any further discussion?
No.
Anyone in all in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, Bruce?
Are they the only one talking today?
Yep.
Cooley Hill, how we doing?
We're doing good.
Are you doing fully? Good, alright, that's a quick answer. Restrooms.
Restrooms.
Yeah. I was in your office the other day and I was, showed a print that showed we're going to be installing four stalls in that area. Telling you what I was told, telling you what I was shown.
Stalls or toilets?
Toilets, yeah.
Okay, yeah. So the, the plan is that's the female bathroom. Where we're sitting now will be the male bathroom. So to bring that up, just do it as a female bathroom to go to the plan that we have in the office.
So this isn't at all what we talked about in probably the last department head meeting?
I don't know about the department head, I mean, I think we talked about department head meeting. I, I'm, I'm assuming you're referring to putting a kitchen in there as well?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we discussed not putting the kitchen in there.
Build out the bathroom.
Where are we going with the assessors then?
That room over there. Possibly splitting in half.
What are we doing for handicap accessibility?
For the bathroom?
Yeah.
That would be handicap accessible.
Are you in a sex bathroom then?
Technically, yes.
No, that's not technically, it's either, it either is or it isn't.
It is, but long-term, that would be the female bathroom.
Okay.
The desire is to bring it up to the plan that we talked about and not to rehab a kitchen slash bath after the fact because that handicap bath is that last stall in the back.
Okay, what are we doing with a kitchen? Or a, or a slop sink for the custodian?
If we can maintain that, we have Tan Task working on plans for that. If not, once this is done, the existing bathroom now will become that pseudo-kitchen.
Doesn't that drain it to a dry well right now?
Yeah, we have to meet with the Board of Health on Monday.
I don't really care about a kitchen, I eat in my office anyway, but other people might.
Yeah, that's why we haven't lost sight of it.
But you have lost sight of it. When you renovate that, put the assessors over here, the kitchen is gone for a great number of years.
Not at all, there's partition, you have a door here for access to the assessors and you have a door here to access to.
I, I walked through there and measured the square footage and the architect was marginal on whether there was enough room there for the assessors. There was. But that left a copy machine over there as maybe a small file cabinet room with a copy machine. I still don't know where we're going to move that and have the kitchen involved.
And then you also need a place for your, for your mailroom too, for everybody's.
Right, right, but that would have, that would have left that area for that type of stuff, so I don't see where a kitchen's going to fit in there unless we start relocating all the file cabinets.
There'd have to be some movement for it. This banquet table can move, we could put the copy right in that corner, we could put them. At the left.
This wall is going to be renovated then?
Eventually.
Eventually, but not in this phase. Right now it would be a dislocation of the assessors' office to that location. The kitchen, if we could keep it as a kitchen.
Yeah, I see, that's the problem. Like I said, I don't care about a kitchen, but I don't see that happening. You have too many file cabinets in what will be the assessors' office to have to be relocated outside of the assessors' office. There's no room for a kitchen then.
We can do something.
If we keep the kitchen there, don't we have to keep the sink?
There would be.
So doesn't that mean we have to plumb all the way the entire length of the town hall?
Well, it's already plumbed.
No, you're absolutely correct, Cindy. I was in here with the plumber that day, there's no vent on that kitchen sink.
Right, yes.
He said if we move the sink, you have to vent it. I can't touch it.
Right.
Uh, what are we going to do, put a comp in to get over here?
No.
No, well, the plumbing's there now currently with no vent. I know on islands, I don't know if it's still code or if they changed the plumbing code, but you can vent an island within the actual island because there's no structure to vent it out to the roof. So that's something that I'd asked Tan Task to look into as well.
So is that sink going to go to the septic system?
Right, well, it is now currently. Not to septic, it's just to the, to the cesspool. But I have a meeting with the Board of Health on Monday to.
Doesn't imply a Title V?
We have a discussion on Monday over that.
It has to go away.
Well, that's why we pushed the assessors on this half of it and leave the sink where it is.
I thought we were going to move the sink.
Will plumbing code allow us to move the sink?
That's, that's where we have to have that conversation. And if all it is is a vent and then the Title V issue, which we meet on Monday on.
Do you have a slop sink going in for the custodian with the bathroom renovation? Please, do something for him.
Well, the desire is to, yes.
Yes.
But it all hinges on getting that bathroom done first and then what we're going to do with the bathroom.
When you put the bathroom in, the plumbing should be put in so that if that's the custodian's closet where he is today, something should be done so he has his own sink carrier in there. Dumping the floor water down the kitchen sink.
That's been, that's been going down there for years.
It is, well.
It's always been used that way.
Well, that's a good assumption.
Liaison in the town hall for projects, we need one. I don't care who it is, but I walked around the town hall with six different plumbers and probably two or three heating, different, different heating contractors only because Karen said, "Hey Bruce, can you take these guys around?"
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, what do you want done?
Are you a liaison?
What do you want done? I don't know, and neither did I. All I could do is point out this is our two furnaces and this is our bathroom area, our plumbing area. Before we call in contractors, we really need to have some identified projects and say to somebody, "Do you understand what's going to happen here?" Because if you're around, maybe you can show them around.
Well, I've been doing that through phone conversations when they come in. They'll call me and I'll walk them through it.
But do we want to have liaison, I mean on.
Doesn't, doesn't work, no, Steve, that's all.
You never know when they're coming in.
Well, that would be up to the parties to make an appointment, right?
Well, that's just through the selectmen's office.
Yes, that's right.
And they come in at their own discretion when they can.
Like I said, I think it would, it'd be helpful if someone was here, it could be Peter, it could be me, it could be her, but we need to know what the projects are that you want conveyed to the contractors.
I, I think it's a good idea to have, you know, have somebody here that can walk around with these people and show them just what has to be done.
I mean, even Karen could do a fine job if she knows what the projects are.
I, I think the assumption's been that Bruce in this building knows what's going on, but he's saying he doesn't. So if we do look towards.
No, obviously, obviously I don't, Steve, because I didn't know that bathroom was being forced off.
So, so if, well, if we're going to take the bathroom, the gentleman that did the fire station wanted to bid on this as well and I walked them through that over the phone as well, so. But you're not always here, so dedicating liaison. But I'm not opposed to keeping people in the mix. I thought, you know, the assumption was people were in the mix.
No, we were pretty void of knowledge this summer when people walked through the town hall. But they're just like, you know, that's all, you know?
Noted, so we'll, we'll do a better job of making sure that things are documented for people to walk through.
Sure.
Okay.
So, that's all I have.
Send it.
So while we're talking about the town hall, can we talk about the town hall roof?
What about it?
Snow and ice. Can we do something for when the snow comes off this town hall roof to break it up so that people on the sidewalk don't get hit with it?
We've had the discussion, right when it was installed, putting up breakers, bigger ones, wasn't taking engineer stamp as well, it was going to be a lot of money.
Yeah.
They basically said that it wouldn't be worth the money. I think, Don, you were involved in that conversation as well years ago.
Yeah, we looked at putting in snow cleats, the ones that are there are.
Inadequate.
Inadequate, right. There are a couple of different options. It is relatively expensive, but I think it's something you got to do.
But then someone made the point that a lot of that melts before it even hits as well.
No way.
When, when I've been in the town hall, when the snow comes off the south side, it sounds like a freight train and it hits on the sidewalk.
But then the issue of the breakers, that it wasn't going to alleviate that, uh?
Sure would.
Well, they're not really breakers, they're snow cleats and what it does, it keeps the snow from sliding, allows it to melt. But what it needs to be done is a study and have.
Well, we did that, we brought that engineer in.
We did and like I say, there were a couple of different options as far as how you can do that.
But we, we decided none of them would be worth the expense. If memory serves, that was like three, four years ago.
Don't we still have money in the town hall roof account?
I don't think so.
Yes, we do.
Yes, there is.
You asked Betty, asked the.
How much?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand.
Somebody is going to get hurt when that snow comes off.
At, at the very least, you should do it over the, you know, over the doorway.
Well, I know of, I know of probably three vehicles that the roofs have been flattened off.
Yes, I, I was just going to mention that.
Flat, it's no joke.
When we used to have the senior citizens up here, they used to meet, I remember the snow coming off and it did, it flattened somebody's roof, it broke a whole windows in the vehicle and they were parked right out there in the handicapped.
Listen to these town, you know, the selectmen, you know, she's been here.
But over the door, we advised that the valleys would eliminate that as well. That there's a valley over that door.
What do you mean a valley over the door?
There's a valley over the doorway because there's a gable over there.
But it's, it's, it's more than, you have to slow it down. It can come off the roof, but it comes off the roof and actually lands on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Well, that was part of the discussion is that you're not slowing it down.
Oh, yes, you will. Snow cleats. The school's got one.
I've seen, I've seen, well, the school had, what, which school, elementary?
Elementary school.
I'm going to talk about Tan Task, where Tan Task was a metal roof and that snow, if it's bad enough, we're taking down those breakers.
Well, the breakers might, we're going to have to hold it up there.
Didn't one year, didn't we put some snow fencing around one year so that people wouldn't?
Yeah.
No, something's got to be done because we can't have somebody get hurt up there.
I'm very surprised our insurance company's allowed us to go this many years when we all sit here and say we have a problem.
What's the issue? You're on tape today.
Been on, been on tape many, many times.
It's, it's, we've, we've had in-depth conversations with licensed engineers in regards to this. It's, it's nothing that we've turned a blind eye to. But if you want me to reach out to individuals again, I'll take it and then report it once I have information.
Yeah.
I'm going to probably say it's not going to be done this year.
Probably not.
Well, we have to do something.
Should we then snow fence back up this year?
Yeah, probably.
No, we're going to cross our fingers and hope that there's no snow this year.
That works too.
That's on that one.
And then actually out here, now we have the parking lines, if people park close to the building out here, north side doesn't come off as quickly as the south side.
Yeah.
But I would hate to have it come down in some of these vehicles out here.
It doesn't come down even quicker. We have signs out there, don't we, for liability issues, there's no signs? I thought we had.
No, this is what Cindy talked about, just to make this.
Is there a sign on the building?
No, they're in the cellar, they're temporary.
They used to be in buckets, right?
Or not, there was a sign up there.
Yeah, they put them up against the trees.
We do need some signs up probably out front.
I think we should, I think we should attach signs to the building.
Yeah, watch out for.
Maybe like six to eight feet. Can you take care of that?
Can I take care of it?
We can dig them out of the basement first off, right? That's who we have, you know, but, but there again, we'll put up the temporary, we'll put up the winter signage, fencing.
If we need signs made, we can make the signs, but I don't think we have one.
Well, that brings me to the next.
But I'm not going to attach them to them.
Okay, that, that wasn't the intent. Um, South Pond, have you made sign, drafted that yet?
No.
Okay. Can we get to that too before the snow melts?
We can get to it by spring.
I was just going through the minutes and I noticed, that's discussion. Anything else, Cindy?
Um, yeah, a couple of things. I heard through the great line of finance policy that Bruce and I worked on was implemented.
For finance policy, the one that all of us?
The three of us worked on.
Yeah.
Was it?
I think July first it was implemented.
Could we get copies of that?
It's been in the selectmen's office, you've been working on it. It's been in the selectman's office, you've been working on it, um-
None of us have seen it.
It was voted in a meeting on tape.
Yeah, we voted for it.
Um, it's gonna require department head signatures. We have forms now in Excel format for, uh, payroll and whatnot, so if you guys wanna look at that as well. And then just the required signature to the department heads, so-
So could we get an email to the-
First of all, obviously, to all the private heads. I think we had asked Karen to email all the private heads when we voted.
We didn't know it was ever adopted?
No, we didn't know it was adopted.
You were.
Um, credit card. It's becoming more and more difficult to order items because we're all gonna use our personal credit cards to order things. Like, including municipal, you have to pay an eight percent, um, buyer's fee to municipal. It's, it's difficult for some of us to put hundreds of thousands of dollars on our personal credit cards. Is the time now maybe to look into the town getting a credit card?
I believe-
What's, Betty, Betty's been the biggest person against this, what, what-
We do, I think we're doing it the same thing, I feel-
But every, every year it comes up.
Yep, and another thing, I, I feel it needs to be done, I think everybody needs some petty cash too, because, you know, a lot of times you have to-
Part of that new finance establishes a petty cash, so-
Yeah, that would also be wonderful, and stamps are not a big deal, you can, but, but when you're asking an employee to put hundreds of dollars on their personal credit card-
That's not, I don't think that's right.
The electrical inspector did it for cameras, you know, Herb did, one of you guys-
We're, we're, we're all done on the pair.
We're all done, we all have, yeah.
So I, I think that discussion has to come through the accountant, the possible treasurer, because they seem to be-
Even if it were a credit card that the treasurer controlled?
Control.
There was a history of someone misusing it, wasn't there?
I never knew we had one.
I never knew we had one.
Well, yeah.
That was, uh-
Had it in Staples or something.
Either it was Staples or Home Depot or something like that, there was an issue.
And, no, I think the issue was, I think somebody had used it and they put personal things on it, and that's what the problem was.
Like Cindy suggested, we could actually just hand the, the appropriate person-
Right.
The order and say, you placed the order, now you're in control of it.
I'm not opposed to that at all.
You know, I'll give you a, a small example down at the highway graduate, we got a tire that's got a slice in it. This chemical unit that we have to buy is online, that's the only place that we can buy it. You know, last time I bought it, I don't, it was between forty and sixty bucks, I think it was. You know, I paid for it myself, you know, we actually need some more again, you know, and I'm debating whether or not if I'm even gonna buy it myself.
All right, so I'm gonna reach out to the treasurer when I see her, and we'll put it on Tuesday night to John.
And just to go a little bit more with that, Bruce and I, you know, we've done a lot of work this summer and stuff, the blades for the cutoff sauce and stuff, we had to buy it from our vendors. We can actually buy it online, the same exact thing, for a third less or better. So math says to take and buy it online, but we can't. You know, we're not gonna keep tying up our, our money and everything else.
Betty doesn't like us doing it, she allows us to do it.
Yeah, she hims and hawls about it.
All right, so I'll reach out to Sandy and we'll have it on Tuesday night.
One or the other, very exactly.
'Cause the only trouble, say, if we keep them, um, letting them order on their credit cards, and then they put in, you know, expenses, and then at the end of the year, um, we have to give them, what is it, a W forty? Is that what it is? And I mean, they shouldn't have to be paying taxes on money that they've already spent.
Yeah, on that, on the town credit card-
It does happen.
Don't know where the ins and outs may be on this, I don't know if you need to talk to town council about it, or talk to the D O R, or whatever it may be, and just try to confirm.
It's not rocket science, I think, Herb, but I think that the issue is trust.
Yeah.
And if it's just the treasurer having control over it, I'm not opposed to it.
I'm not opposed to that either.
But I don't think Sandy's ever been brought in on the discussion.
Right, alright.
It also ties into the whole tax assembly, 'cause when somebody personally charges it-
Yeah, we, we end up beating all the taxes on it.
We have taxes.
Betty, I've been there, been there, done that as well.
Actually, just as a F Y I, even if you don't have a town credit card, if you can show that you're purchasing it for the town and have a copy of the tax certificate-
We've tried to do that a couple times, and they said, no way in that.
Really?
Yes.
No, they, they usually should be able-
Some entities won't do it.
Yeah, some entities-
We're probably talking online entities.
Yeah, they won't take it.
They're not gonna do it.
Like, small, small ones, like, you know, if you could put down a Staples, if you don't, Staples will do it, but they're not too many.
And Betty's the one that has that, and we've all, I don't know if Clarence has been there, but we've all been there trying to get that going down Home Depot or on a Staples and saving the town money, so, so we'll talk about that.
And then my last question is about the volunteers' policy.
Yeah?
I was wondering if perhaps it was time to rescind it.
The volunteer, what do you mean?
You have a policy that there are no volunteers in the town road field. It started out as a policy regarding volunteers driving town equipment, and then it was changed to amend the volunteer driving policy to include all volunteers regardless of departments.
I don't think it's a volunteer, we discussed this last month at a morning meeting, 'cause you had requested that we rescind the driving of town vehicles for volunteers. And we pulled it out, and that's a different topic that we haven't found.
Uh, this was done back-
Yeah, this was just about driving.
Well, I think we've had volunteers driving town vehicles, so-
Oh, yeah.
They, they shouldn't be, but they're not.
Perhaps it's time to resc, either rescind the policy or enforce the policy.
Well, it needs to be enforced, and we would hope that our department heads would enforce the policy that this board set. And we had this discussion a month ago, if you can remember correctly, in the selectman's office.
So, the, the one that comes to mind, the example that would come to mind is the mowing of the common. Is that, is that individual a volunteer, or?
He is a volunteer.
Yeah, so that's where that rub comes.
He, he's an elected official.
That, that also is true, but in a particular, that particular instance, he's volunteering to do that.
But this, this was, the motion says class D vehicles, not long-
Not long, yeah.
Alright, alright, I see. Okay, that's, that, that was the one that comes to mind for me, anyway.
So you'd like us to rescind this, Cindy?
Well, either rescind it or enforce it, you know, it's-
Okay.
It can be a policy that we maybe sometimes possibly use, if it's a policy, it's a policy.
Well, again, this goes back to the departments enforcing it, something that we have. Are you guys letting volunteers drive class D vehicles?
Or do you want class, that's the other-
Or do you wanna allow volunteers to?
I, I don't, the issue was insurance, liability.
Because-
Every, every time we've talked to Larry Joseph about this-
He said it's not an issue.
It's not an issue. It's covered no matter what.
Now, these drivers that you, these volunteers, they, you make sure that they have-
I'll, I'll give you an example.
Pick up trash, they can't do it.
Who, but who's the volunteer doing it?
Any volunteer in town. Don Taft wants to take a one-ton truck, pick up trash, he can't do it, according to this policy.
I, I'd argue Don Taft's an elected official as well.
But these people are truly-
But he's elected as a water commissioner, so therefore he's performing a task outside of his elected capacity. If he's volunteering to pick up trash, the water commissioners don't usually pick up trash.
I, I, I don't want anybody that's not under insurance driving any of our vehicles.
Well, in that case, everybody that's not, right, in that department and everything else should not be driving vehicles for the town, period. And that's gotta be approved, whatever.
I don't think that's, I don't, that's not what this policy says, Herb.
But that's what you're getting at.
You have a, no, you have a tendency to, to go to extremes, to make arguments, I, I respect it, 'cause I do as well, but that's not even this point.
So, so let's use the example of the cemetery. The cemetery needs to use a one-ton truck-
Yeah.
When the highway department digs a grave.
Yeah.
Mike Siri drives the one-ton truck.
Mm-hmm.
Mike Siri's a town clerk.
Mike Siri has about five different hats in this study, he gets a paycheck.
Yeah, he does.
Yeah. He's, he's a cemetery commissioner, which in my-
He's a cemetery superintendent, yeah, it's not a commissioner.
Which is even better, makes a better point, my argument, that just the-
But is Mike Siri's license, all highway department's licenses have to go to the insurance company. Every, once, once a year, I send a list of everybody who drives a highway department vehicle, including my own, myself. Um, I don't think we'd ever do that with, like, Mike Siri, you know, those, those people who occasionally drive a vehicle. So then are they volunteers, or are they performing it in a town employee capacity? And if it's a town employee capacity, shouldn't we be sending their licenses?
That's a question to Larry, but in, in your example, Mike's an employee of the town, and I have no problem with Mike driving a class D vehicle.
Now, with these class D vehicles, do you have to have, um, a special license?
No.
It's regular driver's license.
That's all that we have, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, a special license would be a whole different.
So, no, I, I kind of, I think that anybo, I kind of agree with Cindy, anybody that drives these vehicles should be on the town insurance.
As a driver.
As a driver.
For those specific vehicles though, I mean, 'cause I, I send my guys in to the insurance every year, but recently I've been taking Herb's truck to help get stuff out of the thing. Now, he doesn't need to send my name in, 'cause I've already sent my name in.
Yeah, you're already in.
Sorry, you're saying that?
Your name's on the policy.
Yeah, but like if Mike Siri, for an example, like you said, he should-
I'm just picking on Mike himself, because you change your mind.
If Larry requires us to have every licensed driver, we should be tallying every licensed driver that's driving a vehicle. Nobody that's on that list should be driving, based on this policy, any of our class D vehicles.
And then maybe, maybe, I don't know how Don feels on it, I mean, with him being on the Q Q L A, I mean, if there was trash down there at the, um, you know, down in South Pond, and if you need to clean that up and borrow a truck to do it, your name should even be on it.
Have you ever borrowed a truck to do it?
No.
No, but just, I'm just saying, just in case you ever had to.
No, but we were down cleaning up the campground and-
Could we just simply have a list in the selectman's office, if you, if you, I don't wanna say wish to drive a town vehicle, but if you are going to drive a town vehicle, you must sign up first.
Yeah.
At least, at least you'll have an ongoing list.
But that would be at the discretion, in my opinion, of Larry, of what he requires for licenses.
He might not require anything, but the selectmen wanna know who he's driving.
I think the selectmen, because it's a li, because it's a liability on us.
But that's what this policy is, is town employees are the only people that should be driving the vehicle, period.
But there still should be a list of them, I think, who is driving them.
Yeah, our town employees have the ability to drive any vehicle they can. I'm, I'm not gonna, you know-
And that, no, not gonna, no.
We're not gonna have Cindy get into a class A vehicle and-
No, with a gray area, someone like Donald Taft.
Yeah.
He is elected, is, is out of town, boy, that was, that was gonna be my question, you know?
I would argue yes.
Fine, that's an answer then.
Is that a question for Larry, I guess?
Possibly, but I think, I think the underlying question for Larry is, what does he need for licenses? And what is our liability in regards to people driving a class D vehicle?
Shall I reach out to him and see if he can get a answer to it? And whether an elected is considered a town employee?
Or volunteer of some sort.
Operating, uh, obviously operating under the, uh, town's capacity.
But that gets into, and, and, and we can go even deeper into this, we have a pol, a program that we've had for three or four years, nobody's taken advantage of it, seniors or veterans. You know, I, I really don't want either of those individuals driving around a one-ton pickup truck on the Rose Brookfield.
But that would be up to the department heads, whether they-
Would be up to this policy that they can't, that's one of the underlying reasons of this policy.
Yeah, but I think-
And then your point of a lawnmower, Steve, actually, what's our liability?
We had this discussion last week, uh, last month as well.
A volunteer.
I'm more concerned about a lawnmower on the common than a class D driving up and down Route nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think having the information and then re, reviewing or whatever what's-
So maybe that's, that's a question for Larry, um, but me, my argument was that he's an elected official-
Yeah.
For the cemetery department, that holds those fields down there as well.
Yeah.
You know, I've moved the common myself with the town's lawnmower. I'm an elected official, I know how to run a lawnmower, I didn't cut my leg off, I didn't take any dogs out, but that's the extreme, and again, that's why I respect the extremes, because that could be the ramification of maiming or killing somebody.
And then given that information, we then can readdress what, what the policy is to make sure that we're consistent.
Could, could you answer me a question on policy? We have bylaws in this town, we have policies, what's the difference? And where do you draw the line on what is it, and what is the, the strength of a policy is enough in this case, it doesn't have to be a bylaw?
I think it's a law, but they-
But bylaws, bylaws have to be approved by the attorney general's office.
I, I, I know, I know the, the procedure to create a bylaw.
Yeah.
But at that board up there, when do you decide this could be a policy, but that must be a bylaw?
I think mass general law does, it does.
So, so there's actually three tiers, there's actually a, a, a level of bylaw, again, mass general law, and-
You know, I go to our personnel booklet, and we have a, a bylaw that says you get X amount of holidays off a year, our bylaw says-
Well, that's what the town voted in.
I understand that, but who?
To, to me, that was somebody that wanted the town to vote on it versus the board of selectmen. Because technically, we don't even need that in our bylaws, mass general law says we don't need that part in our bylaws, we can take that out completely, but a citizen petitioned?
Right, and I understand why they did. I didn't do it, but I understand why they did, because they don't want the board of selectmen, uh, having ill feelings against a group of employees and saying, we're gonna remove this policy, we're gonna change the policy. The bylaw, you can't change that easily.
Well, I think the part of the bylaw, I mean, the personnel committee is talking about removing that from the bylaws as well now.
I would argue against that, Cindy.
We're not talking about removing the entire thing, we're talking about removing, we're, in, our intent at this point is to leave the first paragraph-
Yes.
In and remove all the rest of the personnel stuff and create a new like, you know, concept.
Which is policy.
Yes.
And then the third level that you need to get to are work instructions, which are essentially our job descriptions, or the way we're handling it today, are job descriptions. And each of those, at each three levels, they need to be tied in, in sync with one another.
We, we, we've been working on those also.
Wait, do we have a lot of job, uh, job descriptions already in place?
Exactly, I'm not saying that they're not in place, what, what I'm saying is, Bruce asked the question of policy versus bylaw, bylaw, yes, down the path of mass general law, second is how you run your town, you have policies that run your town, and then what you then need to link to that, whether through job descriptions or otherwise, are work instructions.
And we are going through a process right now of evaluating job descriptions, right?
Yes, we are.
The bylaws state the positions that the town holds as a bylaw.
Right.
When it says water superintendent, is that attached to a particular job description?
Should be.
Then, then is that job description part of the bylaw?
Absolutely linked, absolutely.
Yeah, see, I don't think we've ever, I don't think we've ever done that part of it.
No, this is gonna be different.
All, all job descriptions have been done through, in my history, through the board of selectmen, they're, they're not in the bylaws.
Right.
To me, a bylaw supersedes a policy.
Yes, oh, absolutely.
Steve, I spent a year changing a job description, and it was definitely through the bylaws.
But because we're there today.
Well, I, I know about two years ago, we went through about five or six different job descriptions, and they were approved by the selectmen.
What we're doing with the job descriptions is we're taking the Coleman and Page format-
That's what we did as well.
And fitting Brookfield's job descriptions into those format.
Well, then don't, then don't lose sight of what we did around two or three years ago, 'cause we already did some of that.
We're, we're having each department come in and talk to us about it.
We did the same exact thing.
So is the select, when the selectmen's turn, which is next month?
Well, I'm just, I'm just telling you, just, there's no need to reinvent the wheel on some of it, just take, take a look at what we did.
Yeah, but so, so then do we have to adopt these new job descriptions as bylaw?
No.
No, 'cause we're gonna try to get, no, it would just, it'd just probably be selectmen's approval, isn't that what we said when we do the new handle?
But the title is, is, is bylaw.
Correct.
But the description doesn't have to be.
Which sets a stepping grade as well.
Right, that's all I'm asking, though, the title is bylaw.
Today, but I'm thinking that the personnel board is actually looking at the bylaw itself-
Yes.
And, and pulling out much of what's in the bylaw today and putting it in the handbook.
Yeah, like rescinding, we wanna, we wanna have them all rescinded.
Okay.
'Cause we, the recommendation at, at the last special town meeting was not even to put in the assistant or principal, whatever we're calling, the new assessor that we voted on. And Michelle recommended, don't even do it, but there was a desire to do it, so we did it.
No, I just, over the years that I've been here, I've seen policies created, and I always wondered, at what point does someone say, well, this is a policy, but this must be a bylaw? Just particular preference on the person adopting the regulation?
I think it's politics.
Okay.
Yeah.
Short answer. Uh, Cindy, while we have you and Herb here still too, we had a gentleman that reached out to our, um, police chief in regards to crosswalk, uh, that crosswalk again between, is it Mill Street? Yes, Mill Street.
It's at the intersection of Mill Street, Pleasant Street, Lower River Street.
Well, not so much Lower River, but the other side, the Mill Street.
Massachusetts state law says you cannot put in a crosswalk if there is no sidewalk.
And, and that was, we brought this up two years ago.
Yes, you did.
Yeah.
Don't, don't-
No, I know, I know.
Don't shoot the messenger.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
That person that is constantly complaining about that-
Well, it's not complaining, Herb, so it's-
Well, require, requesting-
Requesting.
However you wanna put it, requesting this, it'd be nice if that person would walk on the sidewalks that are there existing.
Again, the messenger.
So, I'm, I'm just relaying that and-
I can send out that copy again, Steve, if you need it.
I don't, I don't need it, I, once, once the chief talked to me about it, I've literally gone, and I did it again this morning, I drove around up and down Howard Street, and there's, there's a crosswalk going towards Howard Street, and bang, there's a sidewalk in Howard Street.
Correct.
You know, there's a-
Sidewalk goes to a sidewalk.
And that was the argument I made last time.
Crosswalk. He's come to me a couple times, and, and the reason why he came again was because he was under the impression, as was I, that it would be revisited after the bridge is redone. Because I think he was told that, and, and that the line of sight wasn't good. I, I don't know that he knows that it's a state law that says you can't build a crosswalk.
We told him that two years ago, Mike.
Okay, if, if we have something in writing, I can take that back to him and tell him that that's taken, 'cause I, I, I think he understands that that's not the case, and I'm, I eat, and I don't wanna misquote him, I thought he said he reached out and that wasn't the case. So if, if we do have something in writing from the state, I, I could show him that, and then that would, you know, solve that, but-
And I couldn't see-
That's why he came back again, is because, and I remember it, the last time we discussed it at a meeting, was, well, let's just hold off until the bridge is done.
But these, yeah, the line of sight was an issue that was brought up, um, it might have been a revisit kinda thing, but I think the underlying issue was that it corrected, it connected a sidewalk to nowhere.
Right, and, and, and he's told me that, that, that doesn't matter, and I, I don't wanna misquote him, I think he said a contact with the state.
It does matter, it does, to me it matters, because-
Can I, can I suggest something?
If we're, if we're putting a crosswalk across into the woods, you know, now, now we're allowing people to walk across a street protected.
There was just a big-
To not, to nothing that is protected.
But I don't know that he wants it to go all the way across both roads, he doesn't, I don't, I don't think he wants to go to cross Mill and Pleasant, I think he's just looking to go to cross Mill because he says people are going through Mill.
There was just a big discussion on Bay State Roads, List Surf, that I follow, and crosswalks were one of the topics, and the liability to the town, if you put in a crosswalk, is that you are saying that's a safe place to cross the street.
Right.
And-
So you have a, you have an island there, so it would be a crosswalk to the island.
We can, we cannot legally put a crosswalk across there, because you don't legally have a handicap ramp.
Well, there is one there now, isn't there?
No, there isn't.
The bridge didn't put one there?
Bill, you?
No.
This, this place on the bridge, he wants it parallel with River Street, the crosswalk. There's no handicap ramp there, we asked the state when-
We asked the state when they were doing the railroad bridge to put a handicap ramp there so we could take and do this. They told us they legally could not put a handicap ramp there.
They did put one in, across the highway project, into the whole bridge project.
Do we wanna put a crosswalk from that handicap?
To me, that's horrible.
He'll, he'll never use it.
I, I don't think he wants it down there either, I, I think.
He'll never use it.
I think I suggested that to him, and I think he said it's just, by then, he would really obstruct the site or something like that. It's probably safer to have it up close to 148 because they can see you if, if they're coming off of it, and then they're turning down Mill Street, and you're further down, they're not gonna see you until they're round the corner.
Because there is one going to Howard Street, because there's a side, and that sidewalk just stops abruptly there.
At the end of Pleasant Street.
Yeah.
Well, sidewalks do stop someplace.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, that, the issue was crosswalk to nowhere.
Yeah, dude.
Yeah.
All right, I think we're done with that discussion. Any other, uh, highway issues?
Oh, I think she does, she's just forgotten.
That's very plausible, the last two days, it's, yes.
We both, Cindy and I both have one, uh, but it's going to the Personnel Board first, the, uh, a job.
Wage authorization.
Wage authorization for a part-time plow operator that put in paperwork earlier, a week or so ago. Because I may need another plow operator that, because I'm down one right at the moment, so. And this gentleman is interested in stuff, so I told him, I put him in for it. He's from town. Excuse me. So that'll be coming to the Board of Selectmen once the Personnel Board gets done with it.
Yeah, that's not an issue.
Still one more.
So go for it.
Did I forget, Herb?
We went to Massachusetts, uh, CMRPC meeting, right? And we heard how we could improve our grants, and so because we've heard how we can approve our grants, I wanna bring it up today, nothing that we need to act on today, but we need to noodle on what best practice we wish to have shared with the town so that we can get some additional points as we apply for grants. And what I'm referring to is the Massachusetts Community Compact Initiative, that the Lieutenant Governor is going around the state trying to push back, push, promote best practices amongst towns and the like. Should we decide to sign up for this, and I would recommend that we do, it, it offers us points. And when it, when I look at the Mass Works grant that we were not approved for, though I was okay that it would not be approved this year for next year, but, but for the following year, we need to really consider it. And to have this Mass Community Compact Initiative move forward would in fact help us. And so the, it, there are several areas that could be involved. And I'll just throw out the, the hype, the best practices that we could apply for, most towns apply for, uh, two or three of these. Could be in the areas of education, energy, financial management, housing, information technology, transportation, or regionalization. I think, Cindy, we came up with two that were really in the area of finance, long-term planning and the like, um, capital planning. Might be something that we could say that we would like to have shared with us, best practices, so that we could understand what we may wanna do in those areas. But again, I think that we need to share this information, and with it, uh, in coming weeks and months, uh, put ourselves in position to, to sign up for this so that in fact it will help the town overall. Cindy was, I mean, those were the two that we thought.
Yes.
There, there were others, but I think that the, the capital planning and the long-range planning would fit with things that I think that we, we need to be thinking about. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Herb just handed me a list.
Tree sheet?
Oh, that's the trees, that was the second.
This is trees.
Yes, the trees.
This is trees.
We need to have a meeting.
We have been getting an increasing number of calls to Highway Department from residents concerned about trees. So yes, we, if, we can schedule a meeting.
Well, if you can forward, if you can get that in an email form, forward it to Karen, and then have Karen send it to the, uh, tree warden, CCing us. Um, I know he had requested a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yes.
He had to set that in print, it's not on Karen to, uh, get that advertisement together. So the last I knew, he was supposed to put together the advertisement, then we go out for another public hearing on the shade tree issue.
So I think if Cindy can put that in, in email form, that would be great, to get it to Karen, and I think what, at the end of that, to propose, we, we had talked about a meeting, and this is really the impetus for, for the meeting, is Herb can take care of a bunch of that.
All right.
And so that.
Let it fall within scenic areas?
No, it's Qua, well, Quabog, the one I saw was Quabog Street.
No, no, none of the ones that, that he's listed here. Quabog Street in particular has been one that the entire road needs to be trimmed, and that's not a scenic road.
If none of those fall within scenic, I don't see why we can't just give the permission to Highway Department do it now.
Well, I think that there was a couple of trees where you needed assistance, and you needed a subcontractor.
Correct.
And so because it's a subcontractor working on trees, that those dollars should be coming from the tree account, so I think by having a meeting with the tree warden to make sure we're all in agreement.
Do we need a meeting, or should we just do this through email and get it done?
It's up to him, I think.
If you can get an email together, I'll make it happen, I'll make sure that I have communication with you, and.
Okay, sure.
I don't think we need a meeting to bog it down anymore.
Well, I think.
The weather is, if we could get this done soon.
Yeah.
I think a lot of these trees are leftover damage from that 2011 October snowstorm.
Yes.
And now it's really.
Once, once we're done here, Cindy, I'll call him, and then tell him to get on.
Yeah, Quabog Street in particular.
If, if he, if he has no problem with, with taking care of it, can you just coordinate it, and then I'll?
As long as he's gonna make sure the vendor gets paid if we have to hire a subcontractor. We had a problem once before, and he would not pay a vendor.
If he gives the okay, we're good, and you can just get going.
Yes.
So I'll call him once we're done here.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I hope that's it. Anybody else wanna walk up to me?
Can I just revisit one, the, the, the roof on the town hall? If I can help you in any way, I'd be impressed to work with you, uh, do some research or whatever, let me know.
My, my first call, to be honest with you, is gonna be Donnie Brathorne, to see if he, to see if he has any contacts. I don't think I wanna go through the same engineer that we went through last time, I think that.
Well, there's a couple, uh, there's a fellow on the Lake Association, happens to be a roofing consultant, which I could reach out to, he's not a.
Well, we, we found that we needed an engineered stamp in order to do it, and Jeff wouldn't, and he has to be licensed to do the work, Jeff wouldn't issue a form.
Well, you can also reach out to a certified slate roof installer, which already has all of that.
I think we did that too, didn't we?
Uh, we contacted a couple, but we, I don't think we had anybody come out.
I think it all hinges on engineers, everything has to be stamped by an engineer, and how much cost like.
I'd be glad to look into it with you, for you, or whatever, just.
Yeah, if you can want, if you wanna look in as well, and go back, and I'd appreciate that.
Okay, will do.
Thank you. Chief?
This thermostat's got a box on it, so one in the hallway has half a box on it, and I walked through it the other day, and the hallway thermostat was at like seventy-five. And then the one in the kitchen doesn't, and the last couple days, kitchen's been turned down to the forties, so I don't know. Now, if we wanna put the box back on the one in the hallway, if we wanna just put a note on the one in the kitchen, see if that's enough.
My history with boxes is that people get impatient, and I was one of them. We had a public hearing in here, and nobody could find the key to it, so I literally ripped the box off the wall because it was like forty degrees here. So they're only as good as the intent of the person that's willing to obey the box.
Somebody's turning it down in the kitchen, and the employees do feed in there, the.
Have you had, have you had a discussion with Paul? Paul might be the one turning it down.
I haven't, when I come in, it's been in the afternoon, and I just, I sit in, and you just get kinda chilled, and you look, and I'm just a little surprised it was down, so.
All right, so did you just volunteer to talk to Paul about?
I'll, I'll talk to Paul.
All right, so let's, let's get the history of what's going on. I'm assuming it's Paul?
Possibly, yeah, I mean, if he knows there's nobody meeting, it's just, there's always, it just seems there's always somebody meeting in there. Or again, if the employees get, you know, pizza or whatever, if they go in, then that's, that's fine.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, a couple of other things, the, I'm kind of in budget season, who's handling that? The board or the advisory committee?
Historically, what we've put in place is the advisory committee. They put the budget together and report back to us.
Okay, 'cause they've, and I don't know what their timeframe is, we, there's nothing else, yeah, and.
So I'll, I'll reach, I'll reach out to the chair and remind him that they're responsible.
Looking at their agendas and their last previous meetings, I've done nothing on their radar of ours at all. Um, what I would ask is, when you do find out from them, if the board could direct them, I think articles have to be due when the budget is due.
Well, we had, you were here at that meeting, there was a discussion of when it should be done, um, so we'll have that discussion with them. I'll call the chair as well today and let him know that he has to get going and advise the department.
Because we, the budget's done well within a couple percentage points, and then we're here to be out, and when we turn in the budget, we've been asked, what do you foresee to be articles? And we put those in, and then it's not until the actual articles are presented that that part of the budget's put out. So we're already just about there, and now we're asking them next. So, so unless it's something that's ongoing, you know, like Eric asks, things like that, that they, they see in the previous budgets, if there's not a lot of warning on it, it's too late to do anything about.
I'll reach out to him and have him talk to us too, as to about what they're gonna do.
And on that same thing, I think, I think the board should direct them, I think we need to set a target and a goal of at least for the next couple of years, a target of $200,000 for capital improvement. We're not getting there. We're, and, and part of the thing, you know, we're marginalizing some departments, we're, we're looking, we're, I think we're, we're not investing properly. I, I, if that fund is built up, we're in possession to act on it. So it, I, it's up to the board, but I think that should be directed to them to try to set, to, not try to, to set a target of $200,000 in capital improvement. And actually, a former member of the Capital Improvement Committee, he made the point flat out, he looked at everything I had on the list at that time, and he said, he felt that that, that no purview with that committee, he said, no, it's not capital improvement, that's capital replacement. You're not looking for anything better except that it's newer, and it runs better. So he, he actually challenged the point that, well, capital improvement shouldn't be dealing with things that should be replaced as a matter of course.
Well, then there was an argument if that's even a capital improvement, i.e. vehicles, so.
Shouldn't that be in a fleet account?
That's, that's where the.
Yes, that's, that's what.
There were, there were two veins of discussions there, because I was on that committee as well.
Yeah, so, but I think we need to set a dollar figure and strive towards it. We, we seem to have fixation on a set figure for stabilization.
I, I have a fixa, I have a fixation on $100,000 for fleet stabilization, so.
Yes.
But I mean, and any, any unit year, my feeling, and I prefer the Police Chief on that one, is four vehicles, he should be doing one a year. So if we do $100,000 in there, $40,000 a year is gone for that, and then for the cost of the fire apparatus, hundreds of thousands of dollars, it would take us years to do, and we're already decades behind, so.
Anything else?
Uh, my last one is on the gas conversion project, is there any money left over to, I've still got work that has to be done on this generator that's.
We haven't, yeah, we haven't gotten the bills, did you call him?
I talked to him this morning, um, the, the generator conversion is set to happen on Monday, and that's.
But you, you coordinated with him, you answered his question?
I talked to him about that, um, I told him the meter should be in on Mon, I'll defer to Herb, we have some breaking news.
Being put on right now.
What's that?
Meter's being put on right now.
So the meter's going on right now, um, the plumbing for the generator, the generator conversion is happening on Monday. So I brought Nick up to speed so that if you wanna be on site to fire his thing, I don't know if he's had, if the wiring sparkers had a chance to look at his project, I know Mr. Wall has, and so. But again, this, this added on project is a result of that, so I don't know where, if there are any funds to help take care of that project.
It's, it's, I, I think there might be money in there. I know there's money in there because this one came in under budget.
Yeah.
And as far as I'm concerned, I would sign off on the work for, for that expense.
Now, is, now I've met Nick quite a few times, is Nick doing the work, or are you having someone else do it?
Um, the plumbing part of the generator conversion is done by a contractor, a Spencer, who happens to be a Spencer Plumbing Inspector. I hoped he could also do the generator conversion, but he very quickly said he has a guy that does, like, he deals with generator conversions, he does all of them, he's very happy with them. He's worked with him, he's also signed off on them, and so he, he's doing the generator conversion, so Monday morning, they're both gonna be working in concert.
Now, is there any reason why, I mean, Nick, Nick is a certified plumber, and he's done all your work over there, is there any reason why you didn't choose him to do this conversion?
Really, I'm torn, I'm just, I, I felt, I felt that this project could be done better than that project had been done. And, uh, the gentleman, uh, Spencer, Mr. Vergeron, came well recommended, so. And it was nowhere near any threshold, it shouldn't be anywhere near, near any threshold limit for, for bidding, I just, just felt that all of it could be, on that, it could be better, so.
Disappointing, that's the first I've heard of it.
Yeah, me too, that's the first I've heard of that too, that he didn't do his good of job.
It's the code, and ultimately, that's it, but there's a couple little things that could've, so.
So those couple little things, can you get him to fix?
Well, part of them is, this all came out of the blue because he told me he didn't know there was propane in the building.
So that's.
Two or three, three feet.
That's the only issue that you have, is that you didn't see it?
And, and the, one of the technicians on the fire department looked at the, the unit installed there and just shook his head, and was just in disbelief that, that he, he quoted, it's the code, but it just looks bad.
When you got a, when you got a wire that's just hanging across five feet like this, and somebody can actually grab a hole and yank it out.
So that, to me, that's unacceptable, you make them fix it.
Well, it, the thing is, it's the code, it's in.
I, I don't, we have to sign off on the project. If, if we're not happy, i.e. you as a department over there, I don't want you signing up for it.
See whether it works, and, uh, I believe somebody reached out to the wiring inspector and said, you know, we're not really big on this, so when Scott comes in to do his inspection, we'll see where that lands, so.
But you, you understand that you're within your rights to say, look, we're not gonna pay you until you fix and bring it up to what we want.
I, I, I'd rather hear from Scott first, just to see just how much he can put on from that specific location aspect than, than just that, like I said.
I don't think Scott has a problem being heavy.
Okay, no, oh, no, that one's not.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
But again, part of it was.
My call list is getting pretty big, I'll call Scott as well to make sure he isn't heavy.
We can't, we can't have all propane.
So it's the, it's the only, only issue was electrical, the aesthetics of it?
I'll point to the phrase attention to detail on some of it.
Is it strictly electrical, or is it?
Well, the other.
Piping as well?
The piping, just, it, I'm not sure, you went over, down, and over, rather than just over and down, and maybe there's a reason, I don't know, I'm not a plumber, it just hadn't looked like it was stock. And, and part of it was just a disappointment that National Bridge couldn't go up and put a meter on because they don't allow propane and natural gas in the same building. And this contractor said that he didn't realize there was propane going into the building.
I gave up on oversights after a police station missed the fact that it should've been cast iron instead of.
Right.
A B F.
But then, but again, the tank was three feet more wide where he was working, so if it was a question of interpretation, but, you know, I think if, if he picked up on that, then at least we could've asked for it earlier. And we still would've been in the same position, we just, it would've been a few weeks removed, so.
I didn't realize there was propane over there either, how long has that been there?
Fifteen years.
Oh, it's been longer than that.
Is it?
That one?
That goes back to red.
Huh?
First always you had to tell them.
No, that, that one, that one.
Yeah, but sometimes, I mean, they are gasolineified generally, so not all propane, so that was the only question I was asking, because this is.
They don't have to keep.
But this is the first time that I've heard that there's propane over there also.
It's either propane or natural gas, fires, those things.
We have two generators, one diesel was propane, and the propane one, you know, on Monday will be pure or natural gas.
Diesel's very expensive for a generator.
Oh, yes, it is, yeah.
Anything else?
Help?
Chief? One sec, done. Chief?
Me?
Yeah, you.
The, the only thing I have is I, I come before you guys a little back, asking to put on four part timers. I've completed the process, um, and I'd like to squeak one more in there, I have very, very good qualified. And I just recently found out that I have a potential to lose another part timer to maybe take me a full-time job anywhere in January. So I'd, I'd like to come before you with five instead of four.
On Tuesday or tonight?
I was planning, no, no, not today, I was planning on my next meeting, which was Tuesday.
Okay.
But I didn't wanna be surprising, I told you I was becoming a four, I should've been a five.
Clarence, and I don't know, Linda, if you've had this discussion with the chief, but when, when people hear that we're putting on people, and this is the same thing with Herb, putting on another operator, you know, we only have so many shifts that those people can fill, we only have so many trucks that Herb can put somebody in. These are just people that they have the ability to take from if somebody else isn't there.
It doesn't cost the town any money, in fact, it saves the town money because if, if I don't have enough part timers to fill the shifts, the full timers fill them on overtime, so it actually. So it actually saves the town money.
No, I understand.
I don't have an objection.
I don't have a problem with that either.
I didn't think you would, I just wanted to run it by you.
That was it?
Well, other than the other agenda on that.
Done.
And just a quick question in reference to Peter's, um, question about capital improvements. The capital improvement planning committee was disbanded, is that correct?
Not so much disbanded, but that this gets.
Assimilated, assimilated in with.
Disappeared. No, it wasn't. This goes into bylaws. Somebody decided that they wanted a capital improvement committee to be existing, and we have a bylaw that it has to be existing.
Right.
I fought for two years, and Kerman and I and a couple other people have put together a bylaw that got shot down twice, that would meld the, um, capital improvement and the finance committee. And it just, and do the same job, which they're kinda doing right now. But it just, it went away. They had no volunteer.
Well, that was my question, because I know that it is a bylaw requirement, and we, we don't have one. It was just, I was thinking that it all got assimilated in with the advisory committee.
No, the, the hope is that the advisory committee's looking at it, which I think a couple are, um, but I think the majority have probably just lost sight of it.
Okay, thank you.
Herb?
On the, uh, wages and stuff out there, has the buyer's report been working on that? About being.
Don't know the answer to that.
Have they been told to work on that?
I know we had a discussion, who'd we ask? I think they were, we had asked them to look at it through discussion, based on next, um.
Next town meeting?
Next budget.
Budget time, right.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering.
My assumption is that they haven't looked into it yet.
Okay.
That would be my assumption.
But I know we had the conversation in this room to, for them to go out and look. A couple of them have the attitude that it's not on the town of Brookfield to look at other towns and compete.
No, I'm just talking about being fair across the board, also in the town of Brookfield. Like I said before, you're paying, some people around here, you're paying them real good money for sitting there and really doing nothing. And we gotta pay guys that are, have to have all their licenses and physicals and so on and so forth, peanuts.
This is the same discussion we had.
That's what I'm getting at.
Well, Linda, that's the personnel board is looking at that.
Yeah, we're looking, yeah, the personnel board, we're looking, we're looking into those.
Okay.
Yeah, we're looking, yeah, we've been working, because what we've been doing with a lot of them, we've been going through, it's like the point, the point system, to see where they fall in the step and grade, and, um, I missed this week's meeting that you had, last week. But wasn't there something that we are, I saw in the notes that we are looking at a new step and grade?
Yes.
Yes, I haven't seen it, but we're looking at new step and grades.
We, I don't know who I forward the information over to, but I was gonna look into that. I was charged with simplifying that, but then you guys revamped.
Yeah, we're trying to revamp.
We just, we wanna reduce it considerably.
Oh, yes, we do, we do too.
I, I don't know who I gave the information to.
Our first step is job descriptions. Once everybody has a job description, then we can move to the, the step and grade.
Step and grade.
Um, but yeah, we're, we're trying.
We're trying, and then we're.
And we've been, Maryland's been really good on that.
Like I said, don't lose sight of the fact that we've already implemented pretty much all of the job descriptions, so take a look at this.
Oh, yeah, we know, we're going by Copman and Page, and then we asked the, um, department heads, you know, kind of where they fall with that, if there's anything different.
This is like days ago, but we did the same.
Steve, so are your job descriptions listed on your computer so Karen can hand them to us?
They should be, yeah.
Now, we, we haven't had those, so if they're on.
I think we did it with, I think we did it with Jim, so I don't know. Through the transition of computer systems or.
That would be great, if we could have a copy of those.
Reach out to Karen.
It must be someplace then, right?
Yeah, because she was, um, yeah, when Jim was here, when we did it. Now Cindy, could I just ask, it's different, we're meeting on Monday, right, personnel board?
Correct, with waters, the water superintendent.
And that's at what, nine thirty?
Yes.
Cindy, um, what's happening with Lakeside? Money's approved from the town?
I actually wanted to get, stay on to that, this topic, if you can remember the, the second topic in a second. Because I, I don't wanna leave the personnel thing for a moment, if you don't mind.
Go for it.
Earlier, Bruce brought up the idea of bylaw policies and, and job descriptions and the like. I think the other piece of job descriptions goes, and again, for today, it's assimilating and accumulating the job descriptions to make sure that they're all in place. But I think the, the larger issue really comes, once those are in place, is to, in fact, do an audit of those job descriptions to make sure that, that, that the requirements of the job and what people are doing match.
So you, when you do an audit, you have to have somebody come in and do that?
No, you don't.
No, it's just a road, road bird.
Well, a lot of, well, I know a lot of communities have, they have had people come in to do these job audits.
Don't, well, don't, yeah, I, I don't see it as a financial issue, I see it as a managerial issue, and the department has to be doing it.
As we have been reviewing the job descriptions, for example, we had Brenda come and do the library ones.
Yep.
She's going down through them and making sure that they match.
Yes.
Exactly.
What everybody's doing, so because we're doing it with every department head, and the selectmen will have their turn, um, we're asking people, does this job description describe what you do?
Yes, that's what we're doing.
So we're doing that in.
So I don't feel we really need an audit done, because we're doing that.
I come from a world, that what you're doing is an audit, and so that's the word I'm using. And I, and I'm not talking about paying anybody any.
Analyze.
Is it analyze, audit, whatever.
Are we accompli-, by, by what we're doing, are we accomplishing what you're suggesting?
Exactly. Because, because if there's a hole, let's fill it. And that's, that, these things were put together saying, these are the job descriptions, these are the tasks that are to be done. If we are not doing it, we're, we are creating a hole. We need to fill that hole.
So by going through each one, we are updating or changing?
Right, but I think to, to Herb's point, back to job descriptions and salaries and those kinds of things are built on a job description. If someone's not doing a task, and they're being paid essentially for that task, it gets back to the fairness issue and how to approach the fairness issue. So it's very important and prudent to do the analyzing that you're doing.
We had that discussion two years ago as well.
Yep.
All right, so I'll ask Karen for the existing ones, so that we can compare Copman and Page's template.
Well, I know Karen has.
With the existing and with the department heads' inputs, so we're really looking at three that way.
I think a lot of the job descriptions that are in the, in the binder that she has in there, they're old job descriptions.
Yeah, my job description was not even.
They are, they're old. So this is, this is why we've been going through them and analyzing them, and you know, seeing just what the people do.
Yeah, and if, if there are things that we need to cover, then we need to cover them too.
We're going through them very closely.
All right, are we good?
Yep.
Any other department head?
Lakeside? Good job.
Well, this is, this is on the other, if you wanna take it up now, Clarence?
Sure. We were notified yesterday by email that we're receiving a package that says that the state has voted our project to be one of the few that will go forward for next year.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is Herb presented me with his, uh, project list for next summer, which means paving Pine Lane, and I have a project I have to do on Pine Lane that has to be done before his project is done, and it's gonna, it's, it's gonna mean closing traffic. So I'm trying to plan, what are we gonna do with the traffic?
I hope you're not proposing going through the property.
Oh, no, I'm gonna have to levitate over the work that we plan to do in the middle of the road.
Put it this way, if, if we don't do something to get them in and out, they'd have to get out by six o'clock in the morning, and probably won't be able to get back until six o'clock at night, and so on.
I'll be on record right now, we're, we're not directing traffic through that campground.
No.
Well, and, and what we need to do is, we need to get the survey done first, so is it imperative that this be done at a certain time?
Your work and my work.
Your work. Can it wait a year?
Yeah, it can wait, it can wait.
No, no, I've.
I know, I know, it is going, Clarence, uh.
Again, we haven't even gone up.
It can all wait a year, but I'm gonna tell you my truthful opinion. There's no direct route through Lakeside now, we know that, walking in, cleaning it. There is, there's a, there's a nice road going in from both streets, Hobbs Avenue and Pine Lane. They don't connect in the middle, anyway.
And that is the issue.
If they were to connect in the middle, I would say, what's the harm in allowing, um, emergency traffic through there for that one day? I mean, we both know it's been driven over more times than any other spot in the town of Brookfield. But that road, that connection isn't there at the moment.
But, but in fairness to the chairman, I mean, we need, we need the information that we don't have. And so I think that, given the information, we can make a better decision, and that's why I'm saying, I'm not sure how quickly we can get this certain. Again, the grant has not been formally awarded us. They've said, yes, submit your, we will be asking you for additional details to then approve that, that activity. But, I mean, I don't know how fast we can do that.
I still would like to see the town of Brookfield, the selectmen's office, take control of the situation for a potential. There's a potential there for a situation that the residents will not be able to leave their properties, or get through their properties. We have land that'll allow this to happen. I think we should at least investigate how we could do this, if that, if that situation ever.
Clarence is saying we, we are, we are investigating it, but it might take a year. I, I would say the project can't wait if Herb wants to pay.
Unacceptable to me.
It's, to me, it's not. They, they know they live on a dead-end, narrow street, if work has to get done, to me, it's, it has to get done.
If they have no way to get into or out of their residence for, for almost a twelve-hour period, I don't, I don't think that's.
Then the project should be designed a, a better way of.
You're right, you're right, the Lakeside.
I haven't seen it.
The Lakeside project should be designed to allow egress under a, I don't wanna say an emergency situation, but under a controlled situation.
And all I'm saying is, I have, I have to have time to figure out what's there.
And right now, it's, it's, you don't have the permission to go through that property.
Right.
Right.
Do what we have to do, that's all.
Right, I just didn't, I'm just letting you know.
They're putting an off paving a year? Is that gonna be an issue?
We can put off anything.
Yeah.
But I still think the plan of action should be here in case something happens.
So let's, let's, let's say we can't use Lakeside after the determination's been made.
Yep.
What do we do now?
That's a tough.
I think we cut the town's people's throat is what we did, because we had the ability.
I don't, no.
Because we own the property.
We still own the property.
That's right.
But through discussion, to me, that's just not a good argument.
Well, wait, what if you had, say, some kind of an access way back on, you know, when you first come in on Hobbs Avenue? And where they had a lot of, um, the permanent little mobile homes way up there on the right? Isn't there some way that we could have some kind of an access there?
Well, I, I'm saying, I think we should look at it.
Not even way back on the prop?
No, no, again.
All right, it's all, it's all in my time, so let's not beat this up anymore. Any other department head issue?
I do.
You did?
Yes.
So.
So on, um, what was it, December first, there was a FEMA meeting, or, uh, discovery meeting is what, what it was called, in Southbridge. Did, were you able to go, or?
I was not able to go. This is, uh, Quinneborg, um.
Yes.
Yes, Quinneborg.
Right.
So what, what they did is they sent us a, a survey that they, they believed to be correct, and I looked at it, I think it is correct. What I would like to do is throw one more to Cindy, that she respond to this, that the document is in fact correct, and that Cindy.
Bruce and I quickly looked at it this morning, the map.
Yeah.
And it's not correct.
Then would you tell them that it's not correct then? The, the data sheet seemed correct.
Yes, the data sheet seems correct, but the map.
Yeah, Karen said this yesterday.
Quinneborg watershed, uh, Brookfield is in the Chickapee watershed. Quinneborg is.
We have in both, is what this thing is telling us.
Okay, I haven't looked at it then.
All right, so, to, not to belabor this meeting, what I'd like to do is toss it to Cindy for one more thing that she needs to do. And to, if, she has, yeah, so she's got issues, again, the data sheet seemed right. If the map's wrong, to Dawn's point, because again, I'm not privy to understanding how that map ought to go, but that we in fact communicate with them, one, our interest to participate, to make sure we don't lose out on grant monies and all those other things. But, but again, I think it's just to participate.
I didn't read their forty-six page presentation yet this morning.
Okay.
Um, but Bruce and I questioned the same thing, because we thought we were in just the Chickapee watershed.
No, you're in both.
We're in both. So what, what it is, is they're missing some bodies of water, so I guess we need to then update the map.
Yep. Could you do that?
Sure, we, we happy to take on another project.
Another project, that's what I was gonna say.
Anything else?
Nope, that was it.
All right, uh.
I know I had to step out for us a minute here for grid and stuff. Is anything being done about trees?
Yeah, we've got to.
No, we already.
Bruce was so quick.
You handed me the list and I quit.
She did it.
Just like that.
Can you, just give me a quick update of what's going on with the trees and what's gonna be happening?
Can you do that after the meeting? And I have a phone call to make and get back to her, so.
Yeah.
Because the, the reason I'm asking this is, if it ends up back for me to take care of stuff and everything else, who's gonna be taking care of the bills? Because if I hire somebody, I'm the one that should be taking care of the bills.
That's what the phone calls gonna do.
Yeah.
And, and quickly, it looks like it's coming back to you, and it's not coming back to you, I think we've always had the discussion that it was a working, uh, teamwork, and, uh, we have the equipment.
And the other reason that I'm asking this, because there's been a bunch of trees that have been cut down in the town of Brookfield that are half the trees, but there's a pile of mess left there.
With, with one phone call, you can start today. So after this, that'll be my first phone call.
Because, you know, uh, Lewis Tree's been cutting a bunch of big trees down and stuff, and everything's been left.
Is that through National Grid?
I do not know.
Because I know they did it with an individual, and the tree warden actually went out with his own chipper and chipped it up for him. National Grid said they're not gonna chip it up.
So this is.
Responsible for dropping it and then done it.
Let, let me know what's going on.
I didn't ask that question.
That, that's just from history of that gentleman, because he was upset, they were, they dropped his pine branches, it was horrible.
Yep. I know who the person was.
He couldn't get National Grid to chop it, and he went out and chipped it up himself. Uh, item number six, is this Kerman or is this the chief for computers?
Both of them.
Let's do this. Gentlemen, welcome. What news do you have for us, gentlemen?
Well, we're not gonna be able to add, bills.com, the app just, uh, they just wanted to bring up the date on the, uh, dealers who asked us the last time to do some more investigation, a lot of different, uh, do, have you just done that?
We had, uh, at your request, an independent person come in, one, not, not purchasing computers from, uh, Steven, I wanna say Tyler, it's not, Steven Taylor. Um, he, he's since retired from IT work, and he came in and he looked at the computers, and he recommended that they, they be replaced. He said the hardware in them is, I believe, six or seven years old. I think the dates he found in them were two thousand nine from the hardware. So he said that they would, he would recommend replacing the computers.
All right, so to kill conversation in time, that's all we needed.
That's right.
Yep, that's.
So I don't think you need a motion for that, do you? It's not overdue, was it? Do we want, was it, was it a dollar amount that we set?
Let's, let's do it if we.
So I want to take a motion to allow the, uh, police building committee to purchase new computers for the new police station.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Do you have any other favor?
Aye.
Aye. With this discussion as well, if we're buying new computers, can we put it in a budget to get a new vacuum cleaner over there for the, uh?
We have, actually at the last meeting, um, actually at the advice of Chief Frank Tell, we have a little bit of money set aside, um, I think not even more than two grand, to purchase stuff like that.
To stock his.
Once we go through to, to purchase, you know, mop buckets, uh, trash barrels, vacuum cleaners, and anything.
As well slash residential grade.
Well, he's, he, he has a dancing partner every time he goes over.
Yeah.
It's, it's a little ridiculous.
It is, it is, it's tough, you know?
And that's, that's, I, I walked it absolute, I, I don't know if you guys have done it, but it's one of the most enjoyable things you'll ever do, just walking around by yourself. I walked it yesterday. Unbelievable building, absolutely beautiful.
I haven't, no, I like to.
And, and what, what struck me, when I walked out the door, Mr. Fisk, who was doing the finished carpentry, just looked at me and said, you know, Brookfield has something to be proud of.
Yeah, they absolutely do.
And that, that made me feel twenty feet tall.
And it's, it's getting close, um, and, and we anticipate moving in in the beginning of January. And we will have an open house on, on the weekend day, and we will invite the public, and we'll give them tours, and it'll be good, but they absolutely have.
Absolute beautiful facility.
Very functional and very aesthetically pleasing building, there's no doubt about that, so.
On time and ahead of budget.
Yep.
Might, might be appropriate to give you an update on the budget. Our, our budget reserve right now is about thirty-five thousand dollars. We anticipate that in some of that budget, we won't spend some of the money, so we may have as much as an additional twenty thousand dollars in reserves. We have a wish list, some of the things that we took out early on when we weren't sure of what was gonna happen, so we took out some of the things that we absolutely didn't need, the chief didn't. need, the chief didn't absolutely didn't need, would love to have.
Well, I wouldn't say absolutely didn't need, I don't like that terminology.
Maybe didn't need.
Less of a need, perhaps.
But, but even if we added all those back in, we still will, even if we added everything back in that we kind of pulled out, we should have ample reserves still, actually, so. That would include even a carport, we could put a carport back.
So, that means we could get a good raise out of that, then, if you turn the money back in.
Well, you know...
Well, you can't...
And I, to be honest with you...
I just wanna bring it up.
I know, I know.
To be honest with you, the layout and all of that, I don't know where, where the carport right now, so I think that'll have to be another day.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're, we're far from making...
Because that, that garage is beautiful.
Yeah.
A black ceiling, it's like, wow, that's something you don't see, it's, it's a beautiful do, everything, just absolutely beautiful. Thank you again.
Well, on topic, I had asked the board at the previous meeting about considering lighting there, especially the streetlight, the style of lighting. You'd say if you wanted to see just what it looked like once it was placed at power, which we finally does. If you go by there tonight, you'll see what the normal lighting scheme would be. The building itself isn't bad, the chief may want to weigh in on his, if he has any concern. Our Proudey Street itself is still rather dark. The thought was, we set, we could have set them up to National Grid for all the streetlights we have. Do we have any streetlights? Do we have any extra that we're not utilizing? Of course, if we're spending money for X, are there one or two that we don't have in place that got cut over here, and we just never put them back? Because especially if we're doing anything with the RTA or the, the police station itself, one or two streetlights on that street would make a great difference.
All right, so we have Karen reach out for that question.
If we're paying for, let's say, 200 streetlights with this one at 190, something.
Well, that brings up Proudey Street also, and while the chief's up here, Herb had a recommendation, or Cindy and Herb had a recommendation, is to stop signs on Proudey Street, and that, that recommendation was given to the chief, and...
There's not a stop sign on Proudey Street?
There's two, man.
Yeah, there's two.
And they don't work. So, this was an idea of something to catch people's attention, so that we don't have 20-ton trucks running over somebody.
So, what's the suggestion?
Well, they use them a lot down south now and stuff, they're actually LED stop signs, they flash around the outside edge all the time.
Oakham has one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it catches your eye when you're driving down the road. I know it caught mine when I was driving down south earlier this year and stuff, and I said, what the heck's that, way up in the distance? And closer I got, then I realized what it was, and I could see it, but it catches your eye and stuff.
I know what you're referring to, that's kind of an extreme, isn't it?
Uh, it's, it's, I don't, I don't think it is, it's a very dangerous intersection.
Because we've had, we've had...
Every accident that's come, it's been the fault of the driver going on Proudey Street, and they just have no idea they're supposed to stop. So, I, I would, I would recommend going with that, and I would also, and Herb and I had talked this, about this a while ago, I don't know if you remember, but I would like to see it painted on the ground, stopped too, you know?
So, what's, what's the logistics of it having to be powered?
Solo.
It's all solo?
This is all solo, it's stop signs.
Yeah, 1,200 bucks, a piece, 1,200 bucks.
We don't need, we don't need one down on Mill Street side, I mean, on...
Down Central Street.
On Central Street, just one on Route 9.
No, the, the problem is, is when they're, they're on Proudey Street and they're crossing Route 9, a lot of them have no idea that they're supposed to stop.
You're talking on the other side, the 148 side?
The majority of the accidents have been caused by the operator coming south on Proudey and crossing Route 9 headed towards Central Street.
Yeah.
But, it's not to say that, it's, it's not gonna happen on the other side, so whatever we do to one side, I would like to see done on the other side.
Both on Proudey Street?
Yes.
Yes.
And where's the money, where's the money coming for that?
Don't know. It's a suggestion that we're putting out there to the board and everything else, and, you know, maybe there's some money out there with, you know, grants, Jepson Fund, something like that, I do not know.
Well, I think the idea at first was to go to have the chief approach DOT.
I don't think DOT is going to, I haven't approached them, but I will, but I don't think they were, because we had, I had contacted them before, and all they would take care of is, I think, anything on Route 9, I don't know.
Well, I know Rudy, Rudy, Rudy had brought to our attention the study, the majority of accidents over by the 148, Route 9 area, so you might wanna reach out to DOT, because it is on their radar that that's a bad intersection, so they might be willing to not only place it, but also to fund it. So, Karen, we're asking...
Yeah, that's where... I will, I'll give them a call.
And then go from there, and then just report it to us on Monday, maybe have Cindy look into funding, and get back...
We can look and see where we can find some money, so...
And get back to us on Tuesday.
If, if all of grants and all of the fields, should it come out of the police station funds?
I don't think you can justify that, no.
Not associated with the police station.
Yeah.
If that's always...
That's gonna be a very, okay, just a, just a question.
I personally wouldn't approve it, but I know from day one, when it was even talked about purchasing Proudey Street, that that was a very bad intersection.
You know, I, I can always use some money out of my road reconstruction if you need to do, do something like that.
But I think it, state might actually buck up for it.
I'll give them a call. I, I don't think they will, because I know I had this conversation with them before, but I'll try to get some.
With that intent of a sign?
Uh, no, it wasn't, this is, no, this is the first time that this has been brought up.
Because, I'm gonna tell you, just, just the history of the state, for them to go into Charlton, Oxford, and start what they started on that quick of an notice, I think they, they take safety to the...
They do, but, I mean, they've had plans in place for that, that to bump it up.
No, they, they pulled the plug on that project, and it just, after that accident, it's, that, I can't believe it happened like that.
No, I, I will definitely, I will call them and see what the second is.
Anything else?
I don't know, if you don't...
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Could I say one thing before they leave, and before Herb leaves? Bruce, Bruce, that's too quick. I'd like to give, you know, let Bruce and Herb know what a great job they've done out here, you know, you know, with all the landscaping, the grass looks nice, it's up, and then too, from opening everything all up. You go by Route 9 at night, and you can see, the town hall looks so nice, you know, we have nice views, because it's such a nice building, and, you know, I'd just like to compliment them and all the work that they've done.
Since you just brought up the town hall in the back area?
Yep.
You know, I know we got one street light out there, hopefully where I cut down the tree, the brush and stuff run that, that'll help out lighten the area a little bit, so...